All right, everyone. The City of Cottula Council will meet for a public hearing on Thursday, January 25th, 2024 at 6:45 PM at the Alexander Convention Center, Room 290, North IH 35 X's Road, Cottula, Texas, 78014, on the request to rezone the following properties. It is now 6:45, so we're in open meeting. The open public hearing, I apologize for that. Lots, the first property at hand is Lot 10, 11, 12, Block 52 of the Ole'under Heights subdivision. And the second property is Lot 8, 9, 10, and 11 from Block 77 of the Ole'under Heights subdivision, from Class A Single Family Resident District to Class G Commercial Business District.
It's just a hearing. If there's no comment, then go ahead and close the hearing.
Does anybody have a comment on any of these properties?
Is this the same location?
The ones that we... Yeah, sir.
Does the staff have any recommendation on the request?
No, I don't believe. Bianca, was there any other comments?
We haven't met them quite.
Will there be sufficient lighting in that alley that we need to get in?
On a, is it, are you considering McCumber Street or the Access 35?
The Access 35.
Access 35. If there's a business built out there, when they have a plan, it would require lighting on their property. There is some lighting out there. I don't remember how many poles, but there are some, and I believe they're like every 300 feet.
You want to ask the applicant there?
Yeah, sure. Sir, ma'am, did you have any comments on the property of the project?
Okay.
Very good.
If there's no more public comments or any information to be shared, it is now 6:48, and this, the public hearing is now closed. So whoever you hire, that's the priority. They're going to take priority. Stop using the excuse, "I'm new, I don't know the addresses." You know, put someone to help her. I understand her, but put somebody to help her, you know, to see and to go around and say, "Hey, this person lives here," you know, "it needs attention. This person lives here." But don't be jumping up and down, you know, and it's very obvious. The people that are chosen and put in the papers, their yard weren't as ugly as some of those out there. And my main concern is a trailer that's surrounded with cars and everything. I have those in my neighborhood too. What happens if it gets fired? What happened to the RVs? And they were in a clean place, and they cut fire all along. I don't want that to happen to our children, to be burned inside a house because the next door neighbor is not clean and their grass is up to wayside and it's dry and they have a junk all over the place. That's my concern. So I hope that you take it seriously, and I wish that, you know, this one Sally was here, that she knows how I feel, and I want you to know, because, I mean, telling me, "Yeah, well, I take care of it." But I have eyes all over the place, and I know the worst properties are not being taken care of, you know. They said my yard was a source. Mine is not on Main Street. Mine is not full of tires. I was in a neighborhood, but yet I cleaned my yard, but then two, three yards past there, they're terrible. So I just want you to be fair, and we need to do something also to help the elderly, because I'm sure there's a lot of elders that need help, and if the city can put something together once a month, go help these people. So that's all I have to say, but please be fair, and I will be keeping an eye on what's going on in this town, because I'm tired of it, because every time I come here, oh, we'll try, we'll try. And what made me mad was when I saw the newspaper, and I saw a couple, only a couple of names. But then you go around and you see on the same block, other yards that are not taken care of at all. You know, just where that other RV over there on Martinez Park burned. How about if that whole block had gotten caught up in fire? We're dry. But what's going to happen to the residents? They're going to lose a house because the neighbors next door don't clean and don't even care, and nobody pushes them to do it. You know, because adults can be like kids. If you don't guide them, they won't do anything. So that's all I have to say, and I hope I get your cooperation, and, you know, and I hope you take it seriously. Because four times here is too much for me. So thank you for listening, and I hope I see a difference, you know, in the near future. Otherwise, I will be back. And I was, I asked to be on the agenda. I was not put on the agenda, and I know I can't talk about it, and I know you can't respond to me, but next time I will be on the agenda. I'll make sure that I'm put on the agenda, because I sent an email, and I was not put on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Albee. Next is Jacqueline Barrasa.
My name was put in the newspaper about a property. I received several messages from friends and family that it was put in the newspaper that we were violating the City of Cottula local ordinance. Okay, at the moment, I was like, okay, how is my property? My property is all fenced in. It's all private fence. There's some regular fence in the front, but it's not, there is no brush, there is no trash, there is nothing there. Okay. I called the following morning, and Ms. Fonseca was the one I was supposed to contact. She wasn't in at the moment. She wouldn't be in until later that afternoon. I left a message for her to call me back. She didn't return my call. I waited Monday morning, didn't receive a call, so I was able to get a hold of the email, so I emailed again, and I asked, as I had already asked on Friday, that I wanted to be put on the agenda, okay, regarding this issue. Well, the following day, I received, I received a call from Ms. Fonseca, and she told me that she understood, that I had an interview with the property owner in the newspaper. She said she sent me a letter that it was registered, but I didn't get it because I usually don't check the mail, but she said, "Yeah, I know. I got it back," or whatever. And I asked her, I said, "Are you sure it was my property? Are you sure it's my property?" She told me yes. She said, "Oh, yeah, it's your lot number, it's your ID number, your phone name, everything was on there." I said, "What exactly is it?" She told me, "It's the ID that burned down." I said, "Ma'am, that's another block down the street. It's not my property." But she had already gone as far as putting it in the newspaper and everything else. I told her, "Why couldn't you have contacted me through the phone or anything else?" She says, "Well, I don't have your phone because I'm new here. I only started in October, and I don't know, I'm not too familiar with the area," whatever. I said, "Yeah, but the city does have my contact information." I said, "Then have my phone number. Call, make sure that everything was correct." You could have Googled it. I Googled it. It tells you what my address is, where the, where the RV burnt. And I put pictures in there just so you know. Okay. Um, because of that, she's trying to contact the wrong person. The property owners were never contacted, and it said on the newspaper that they wouldn't take any action until tonight, okay? On Monday, they had already gone. The city had already gone and moved out the road from there. They never contacted the real property owners at all. So now who are they going to charge? Are they going to charge the property owners? I don't see how, because they never contacted them. They were contacting me, and it wasn't even my property to begin with. So that shouldn't have happened. That, that is a big mistake, because now somebody's going to end up paying for that. That RV had been on the street for a while. It was on the curb. It wasn't even inside nobody's property. Why wasn't it addressed at that time? They could have gone. They could have removed it. It was not inside nobody's fence line. It was outside when it burned. It was there for quite a while. But in conclusion, I'm asking that in the future, please be doing the investigation to make sure that it's somebody's property. Who it belongs to, not just go and put their names in the newspaper. That's pretty embarrassing. What I want is for this mistake to be corrected, this for Ms. Fonseca or anybody else, whoever is responsible, some, somebody's responsible for her, to submit a public apologies letter in the newspaper, just like they had done at the beginning, and accuse me that it was myself. That's what I'm asking for. And in the future, please make sure that you know who it belongs to. Go knock on the door. Go to the county appraisal. They have a lot of information there. But you don't just mistakenly say, "Okay, this is your name, okay, this is your lot number, blah, blah, blah." But I know there's records where it shows exactly where those lots are. "I'm on the 1000 block. This happened on the 1100 block on Martinez." And that's almost, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrasa.
Thank you.
Last one is, is it Sandra Sirtuche?
I'd like to sit back on. Good evening, everyone. I'm here today just to clarify my name, my husband's name, and my husband's campaign. I have brought this up to the mayor and the city girls, because at the time that I brought this up, Mr. Wright didn't want to speak to me. That's what I was told by the girls. But I was called to the Democrat chairperson office to inform me to inform me and ask me that if I knew or if it was true that we were receiving money from contractors from the city. And I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. Have you received any money? No. How are you running this campaign? With God's faith and with our money? We have not asked anybody for any money at all. And he says, well, somebody that works at the city is asking for your husband's campaign and brought up your name too. And I was like, well, they're wrong. It's a lie. Because we have not received any money from anybody. And to me, it's an embarrassment. I don't know how many people heard it in the community or how many rumors are out there. But I am here today to clarify if anybody has going around asking that, has any questions, feel free to ask me. Because we did not take any money from anybody. I did confront one of them. And he said, yes, there was money asked for your husband's campaign. I said, okay, sir, did you actually give it to me? No, ma'am. Did you give it to my husband? No, ma'am. I said, who did you give it to? And he told me who he gave it. So here we are, the victims. And that's why I'm here today because to me it's an embarrassment. I am not gonna go knocking at somebody's door, hey, uh, will you help me with our campaign? Because I don't know their situation. If we have the way of doing this, we're gonna do it. And if we don't, then we're gonna sit back and just do what we can. But I'm not gonna put that burden on anybody. I do not like lies and we do not steal from anybody. And no, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I'm just saying what is true, the facts. And that's why I'm here today because this needs to be clarified. That's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sirtuche. Item number five, Deprimenter and Committee Reports. Um, Municipal Court. She turned in a, was there any business conducted?
Yeah, it's, the report states, Mayor, that there was no payments collected, no citations issued, no court help held for anyone this month. Um, I think in the code enforcement's report, that may be changing a little bit. So she is starting to get a little action in that department and being more aggressive.
Excellent. Um. Moving on to letter B, Code Compliance. Ms. Juanita.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Mr. Wright. My report was in the council package for review. I do want to update on the grease traps at Las Palmas Nursing Home. They're in compliance now. I did receive an email with their new service contract and, um, the date of service was, uh, on, on January 10th. So they're now in compliance. That was the only update I had as far as what I submit.
I have a quick question for you, Juanita.
Yes.
When, when were you, um, when did you take, what, I don't know if you remember, what date did you take your, your testing for to become a, uh, a code compliance agent?
Uh, November 2nd.
November 2nd, okay. November 2nd. The reason I'm asking is because, um, I know that, uh, Ms. Hassel had a concern and this will always be a concern to our city. Um, trying to clean up properties is, is extremely difficult because you gotta give everybody time and sometimes you can find people. Uh, Ms. Barrasa, I'm sorry that happened to you, uh, but we'll correct it. We'll do whatever we can. Uh, and this is gonna be ongoing year round, every year, every year. And, um, I know that you just started. And I know that you're very active because I've seen you. I know that, uh, Cuchula is probably not as big as, as, you know, other, other cities surrounding us, but um, when you have a lot of, a lot of properties, well, that composites a lot of work for you. And I know that you can only do so much. Um, I, I just feel that, um, multiple properties, uh, maybe identifying them and then, uh, and then having a plan, uh, to execute that. I think that it would be very effective on trying to, uh, clean up, uh, the properties in the city. And thank you for, for being our code enforcer because it's, it's an extremely tough job and, and I know that it's overwhelming for a lot of people. So I just wanted to point out that she's just very new, very new for us. She's actually been, uh, a code enforcer for almost two months. On the 22nd of this month, it'll be two months. So, um, we didn't have a code enforcer for how long, Dave?
Uh, prior, we, we had several code enforcement officers that would last a few months, uh, I believe. One lasted a year, maybe a year and a half.
When, when Mr. Garcia left, how long would we left without a code enforcer?
Probably about two months.
And did he, did he get licensed during those two months?
Mr., uh, yes, sir. He, he also had a code report. He didn't have it originally and he went through the same process and achieved his license.
Excellent, excellent. So we, we just had, we haven't had a code enforcer with us for such a long time to where they can actually make a plan to clean up the entire city. But I know that, um, we're gonna definitely all try to help Ms. Juanita out and, and just see what we can do and come up with a plan with that. Councilman, do you have any other questions for Ms. Juanita before we move on to the next?
Excuse me, real quick. I didn't know if I could touch on that or not because it was on Citizens to Be Heard. But I just want to add, um, the letter was mailed out on December the 12th. And so in the letter, there's a statement in there that says that if you're not the property owner or whatever the case is, like just contact us so that we can remove it. Between December 12th to Jan, mid-January, when it did, uh, come out in the paper, there was no communication. The letter was, it came back into the, to the office unclaimed. It had been attempted to be delivered on, I believe it was December 19th and then again on December 29th. So basically I sent out the letter, but if there's a discrepancy or whatever the case is, the property owner needs to contact the office to let us know. So between the time it was mailed out and the time that I got the, the, excuse me, the message to return the call, there was no communication.
Is that our step by step?
Yes, that's the process. When I get the complaint, I go out there, I take the picture, I send out the letter. If I can't identify the property, I use the, um, the appraisal district. I have gone to the appraisal district because the way the property was listed on there, not this particular one, but others. Um, they don't add up, like it has the wrong address. So I've gone and corrected some. On this one, uh, Martinez Street is not divided in blocks. So where the RV was maybe two cars in length, that's where the other property was at. So when I use the GPS to look up the address, it stopped me there. So that's the address that I used. So I, I did, um, explain that to her when I took the call, when, when I called her back on Tuesday morning. I was out on sick leave on Friday and Monday. But I did call her back as soon as I came in the office. It was about eight 30 that.
Thank you for that.
Hey, I'm sorry. For Joey, wasn't it, um, Robbie Thomas also? Was he doing the duties? He's, he was like doing the duty.
He was probably doing it, but not to.
Robbie Thomas, Robbie Thomas was code enforcement officer 13 years ago for the city.
Yes, I'm telling you, he was.
Um. When Joey left, there was only a few instances due to reports to the city that I asked Robbie to go out and take a look at it. Um, as a full-time code enforcement officer, he was not doing that.
The reason I'm bringing, bringing this up is this, uh, if she's gonna need help, maybe assign Robbie to help her once in a while. Do, for her to get, uh, acquainted for the area. And also another thing, can she also download the website for the appraisal office on a computer?
Yeah, the, it, it's available online. Anybody can pull that one up.
So, so for her to have it easier for you, so this, it won't happen again. And before you publicize it, is there any way that instead of putting the people's name, just put in the lot number? Uh, even though you already sent the notification by mail, uh, so this incident didn't happen, get them embarrassed. But the location is there.
You know, I, it needs to have the property owner because they need to, they need to know and I have to show that I made contact to advise him. Because a lot of times the property owners don't know their parcel numbers. A lot of times they don't have a specific numerical to the address. It's just like, say, Dobie Road. It doesn't have like 702, 704. So that's why it has to identify who's ever, who's ever listed on the. Yes, sir. And just to add, I forgot to mention this. I did get down. I spoke to a gentleman that was there the day of that morning when it burnt. And he refused to give me information. Every question I would ask him, it was no. I didn't want to agitate him. So that's why I didn't, uh, I went on the appraisal district and looked up the information or attempted to. Well, they, I don't know if it burned there because I'm not sure when the fire happened, but whatever the case is, it was pulled out to the front or it, I don't know if it burned there or they pulled it out there, but it was on the right away. Yes.
However, the code compliance officer or code enforcement officer sends out, uh, that's actually a statutory provision. It says, hey, if you don't own it, you need to tell us. Otherwise, the, the law says you will presume to be the owner.
Right.
And I don't know why the certified mail was not picked up. Uh, a lot of people just don't want to do that for whatever reason. They, they don't pick up the mail. I have spoken to Ms. Fonseca a couple of times about sending the letters out, uh. Honestly, I think certified mail is a waste of money. Uh, you can, you can send something with what they call approved mailing, which just says, hey, you mailed. And, and I, I think it's unfortunate. But the property owner, had they picked up their mail, would have seen that. So I don't, I don't see how that's a city's fault. This, the, the streets are not, you know, many of these houses are not numbered. You know, we, we, we kind of have hit and miss on street addresses. And so, you know, the, the, this is not a, a situat- situation that's unique to Cuchula. Which is why you have that provision in, in the local government code. Because this probably happens
everywhere all the time. Yeah.
And, and I, I'm not to diminish, uh, what was said. But, you know, the, the, the city complied with law.
Excellent.
And just lastly, I just want to add, um, when I've gotten a complaint or a call or anybody comes into the office, I've never made an excuse for not knowing the area. My comment is always, I'm new, but I'm, I'm not familiar with there, but I'll make sure that I get there or that I, that I'll find it. I've never not made an excuse for not going out to a certain area that I didn't ask to.
Ms. Fonseca, do you have problems with the appraisal district with the actual physical address of the property itself?
I've had one so far that was completely off. The property was on the corner of Cop and Golf. And on the, the appraisal district, it said, whatever the numerical number was, Goodwin Street. So I did go in there. There was a gentleman really nice. He helped me. He corrected it. And so, um, that one was just completely off.
And, and also I've, I've, I've known in instances before that property owners have been traded off properties. One owner is the owner and then all of a sudden you have different owners and you go back to the original owner of a property and you having a problem to finding the right owner. You've got 20 or 30 owners or 15 or 26, or six or seven owners and you have a problem. Where do you go to?
Yes. Well, that's why the statute is in the letter. Therefore, if it's not theirs.
I think the appraisal district should be more updated in, in the transactions of properties because some, sometimes you don't have any, any, uh, changeover in titles. You know, they go back to the original person and the original person is there and then you've got 10, 15 or 20 owners that you can have a problem with.
I, I don't know if you read in the report or not, but that instance happened, um, at a property on Hackberry. So the, the gentleman had sold the vehicle 20 years ago and they never transferred the title. But he brought me the affidavit. When he got that letter, he called me and I said, this is what you need to do. So a day later he came and brought the affidavit. So he was cleared from the case.
Just, just a couple of things. You don't have to own the property. You have to control the property.
Correct.
So, you know, if, if, if we, the appraisal district has has come light years from where they used to. But they've got thousands and thousands and thousands of property. So there are going to be things that you know, people die, they don't probate the will or there's no will, it passes. You know, trying to figure out who owns it is, is, is difficult, but, uh, you know, we could, we could do a better job here, I think of maybe, uh, encouraging street numbering. Uh, we don't get our mail at our houses. So, you know, that's not as important.
I was gonna suggest that to, uh, paint the curb, put on the curb.
Maybe make some funds available to help people pay for that. Uh, and that helps with 911. I know they've been here before too. That's the same issue. Get a 911 call, where is the property? You know, and it's not just for, for our purpose.
And, and you know what? We, we're, um, you know, in, in, uh, in local agreement with the, in a local agreement with the, with the county, we, we've done several streets now. There's still gonna be some that are not gonna have a curb and in a, in a street yet. It's, it's gonna be, you know, Caliche, Caliche Street. Um, I know that those will hopefully will be fixed in the future, but at least the ones that have curves, we should be able to put some numbers on the curves. The house numbers.
Yeah, I don't know if the city does that itself or it just encourages it, maybe publicizes that and maybe gets a company, I, I've seen them or they've come to the city before, you know, to spray the curves, but they show up every so often. It, it is important. It's important for a lot of reasons, not just so that we don't
Yeah.
mistakenly put somebody as the owner of a property.
Right. Then also the ad itself says to contact the office for any questions or concerns. So those are, that's a statutory warning board and that's why it has to be there, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be enforced like right then and there. It's like for them to make arrangements with the offices.
Well, thank you very much for your report. For your efforts. Thank you very much. Next, uh, letter C, water and wastewater.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor, Mr. Wright. You have our, my report there for the water, wastewater and the gas. For the month of December, we had, uh, five out of our eight, uh, samples, um, that came tested negative. Two of them tested positive, uh, please, excuse me, three of them tested positive uh, for colorful. Which means we had to do repeat samples. They were done, taken into the lab and they came back negative. Um, on one instance, we had two of them come back on the, in the same week. Uh, which triggered that we had to do a, uh, level one assessment. Uh, that was done, um, it was just asking, evaluating of our, our water system and how we collect our samples. Uh, did that, completed it, send it in a TCQ. Um, the alcohol was 529. Uh, the demand for December was 28,707,000, uh, 100,000 gallons with the daily demand of 926,032 gallons per day. We also had issues with, uh, well, number nine, um, December 16th, uh, the well stopped pumping producing water. Uh, peerless came out on Monday and that, um, following Monday, they ended up pulling pump, uh, there was a brush savings in the pump. We had to order a new one, um. They, they were here this week. They installed it, put it back in. Uh, we flushed it out, chlorinated flush, chlorinated flush and took our sample in this morning. Uh, we should hear something back tomorrow. If it comes back, uh, negative, um, that well will be back in seven. Which well is number eight? Uh, well, number nine, uh, over on, uh, Joby Road.
You got an estimate on that yet?
Yes, that, um, I believe it's on, it's.
Item number 13?
Yes, sir. And because it says well eight, but, um, that's actually one. Yeah, 40,000 that one. The estimate or the poll for well eight, when that went down, we're still waiting on that. Uh, like I said, last month, it was, uh, 40, 30, like 35,000 or 32,000 for the VFD. Uh, they did charge a $500 fee when they came out to. The VFD, um, they did charge a five hundred dollar fee when they came out to um inspect the well and then the contacts, I believe, were about. Three thousand. So that's where we're at now. We're also waiting to see how much they're gonna, they're gonna charge us to rewind the boat. And roughly, um, around fifteen thousand we're looking at. But once we get the total bill, we'll bring it to the council so they know exactly what we did. And we did do these, uh, as I know, these are emergencies. So we were running off of two wells. So we needed to get that well back up and running.
So we've got well eight and well nine and.
And the Buckley.
Well, seven Buckley. So, so for instance, also last week or, or this week, um. I believe there was a car accident over by Dairy Queen and, or they hit a pole and the pole lit on fire. When that occurred, um, it sent, it sent a jolt to the, our well number eight, which is over by the old swimming pool. And when it did that, it filled that well out. For about four hours, we were down to one well in the city. And I was counting the minutes before we run out of water. So, when, when something like this happens, we act immediately, no matter what. That one there, fortunately, luckily, we were able to get that one up and running. It was a matter of resetting uh everything, you know, all the. Reset, just resetting the breakers and resetting the computer. But we didn't know that. So we have a, we have an electrician come in and verify it before we start it. Um, the concern was is when the VFD, what was it about a month and a half, two months ago burned out? It turned on, the motor exploded and the VFD burned up. You know, they were worried about that and I get it. I understand because that's another forty thousand dollar bill that the city could have had. But the, the thing is, is at that point in time, and we had the, the fire station well, which is well number nine down, we were down to the Buckley well. And that wasn't enough to meet demand. You know, so, so they were pushing and they were working to get it done. When one of our wells go down, it's immediate. It's an emergency. You know, if we have three running, you know, it's gotta be taken care of right away. But if one goes down, two goes down, we're in big trouble. So it's, it's something that we can't wait for. And we come back to council and we ratify it after the fact.
Is there any kind of safety thing with that? No, I don't know that nature thinks it's gorgeous.
Yeah. So, so over the years, we've, we've put lightning arresters. We got surge protection on all of our facilities, including wastewater, wastewater plant, lift stations, freshwater wells. We have protection all over the place and, and it's just still not good enough. But, but there's literally nothing else we could probably put on there to stop it. The, the power's coming through, the lightning's coming through. You know, then it, it, for some reason here in Cthulhu, lightning is, it happens quite often.
I know that sometime, I know that sometime this year, we're gonna have to talk about another well.
Yes. Fortunately, fortunately, when lightning happens, we do have insurance that covers this. So, so like, like the one he's still waiting for the bill to come to council to ratify, that's gonna be an insurance claim. So we have reason to believe it was caused by a power surge. So we will claim that on insurance and we'll most likely recoup our funds as we have in the past. The one that, that, well, we'll wait till we get to the other item, I imagine.
Oh, no. On what? On the VFD, uh, the electrician did explain to me that. The VFD, of course, starts slow. And once, once it builds up and runs at, at peak. There's a switch in there which will go back and it will, instead of bypassing it to where it runs slow, it, it. It kicks off and it, it will continue running at peak, peak uh performance. Well, what happened was the contacters got stuck and ended up shorting it out. That's, that's why, and, and it happened because of the surge that, that it experienced.
Yeah. The VFD is very necessary. Um, we didn't have a VFD one that well. Um, I think the estimate was is every time that well started at three hundred and fifty horse, um, it would be costing the city around eight thousand dollars in light bill. Every time it started. So, so when that VFD went down, we're not starting that well. Because if it runs fifteen to twenty times a day, we've already gone broke.
Any other questions for Jimmy?
Yes, Jimmy. Um, did you get finished and fix the, the one that was it on my team's street?
Yes, sir. That was the.
Yeah, what was the cause?
It was just an, an old line. It was, it was a small service line. It wasn't a very, it wasn't a big.
Thank you.
Wastewater?
On the wastewater, um, the sewer line project, um, they did start boring. Uh, they will be working on Saturday to try to finish that. Um, I went out there today. Uh, they were still trying to get uh. Uh, underneath highway ninety seven. So, um, hopefully by, by Saturday, they should complete the bore. Or maybe even finish the, the project. But they did ask me if they could work Saturday so they can try to uh complete the project. But I know it was, um, when I went out there, there in the pit where they were doing the bore, uh, it, the ground was kind of soaked, so. It, it was taking them a while to go through there.
Councilman, any other questions on Jimmy's reports on wastewater? Jimmy, thank you very much for that report. About gas since?
Yes, sir. Uh, for the month of December, we had uh seven gas leaks and they were repaired. Uh, the ci- city staff has also repaired twenty four, the thirty four leaks uh on the leak survey that was done in two thousand twenty three. Um, on January ninth, uh, of this year, uh, the gas department, they were out exercising gas valves. Uh, and on the, on the line coming in from Dilly and at valve number two, they ended up closing it a little too much where it caused the gas outage. Uh, by the time we ran out of, uh, city ran out of gas, it was around midnight. So, we weren't, we couldn't tell, um, at eight o'clock in the morning, when, when the guys went back out. To look for the problem, they thought, they realized that it was, uh, the valve was, they had closed it a little too much instead of leaving it. Those, those gas valves are only a quarter turn. So they turned it a little too much and ended up causing that, uh, the gas outage. The, um, gas market price was four ten cubic foot, uh, four dollars and ten cents per cubic foot. Um, we ended up using two thousand seven hundred and eighty nine cubic feet of gas for the month of December.
Yes. Jimmy, is there any way of, of, of a safety system that you can install on the gas system, because of the valve? That would warn you that it was overdone?
Um, there, there are a couple of ways, um. The main one is paying attention to what you want. Um, second, you can take, um, Charlie, just like, uh, make a mark.
Okay.
On, on the valve and down on the pipe. That way you know exactly where it's at and you just turn it and then turn it right back and line up the mark.
There, there's a concern because there's uh elderly people that have gas in their houses.
Yes, sir.
You know, when one of those incidents happen, sometimes they forget or they don't have no knowledge. That the gas was, you know, cut off accidentally and, 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 and when they turn their stove or something. You know, you have that leak where that gas going without them know.
Yes, sir.
So that's where we have to take some safety or at least tell the public that, you know, that we had that problem on. Some way, some kind of communication so that people will know about that.
And like I said, we didn't realize it, we didn't notice until the next one.
Sometimes, you know, they don't hear it or see it or nothing, but you can smell it, but how long they turn on the smoke and.
Yes, sir.
Usually, how many, how many staff do you send in a case like that?
Just to take more safety.
Safety precautions to make sure they check up each other.
Councilman, any other questions for Jimmy? Jimmy, thank you very much for that department, um, for that, uh, report. Streets and parks. Mr. Thomas, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, mayor, state council member, Wright. Uh, we utilized the walk behind salt to cut a square of pavement on Bader Street due to a water leak. Uh, repaired by the, uh, water department and refilled it with coal mixed asphalt. Uh, we also initiated a reclamation asphalt project, street project on Baylor and Lander Street due to various, uh, pop. Uh, we also completed a curb cut at eleven thirteen Houston Street and the customer paid the fee. We also, in conjunction with a solid waste manager. We continue to identify alleys in need of service or city garbage trucks and emergency vehicles will have easy access. That's my report. Questions?
Councilman, any estimated more likely when you're gonna have another trash aroma?
It'll be probably the end of March. That's what I'm shooting.
Location?
Plaza Fuit.
David, uh, who goes out to the locations of businesses that have tires accumulated?
That, that is regulated by TCQ. It's not, it's not per se regulated by the city. Um, it is something that Juanita, Juanita could do, but she would report it to TCQ.
Yeah. Basically on the main street that I've been noticing is more visible and see that it's showing more.
Okay. Understood. We'll address it. We'll talk about it.
Councilman, any other questions for Mr. Thomas on streets and parks? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Sanitation. Mr. Martinez, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Wright, mayor. In your package, you'll have three reports. The first report, monthly report for December thousand twenty three. Uh, twenty nine total roll off trips we made, uh, one to the metal well present in Corizo Springs. Two hundred and seventy one, forty seventy two tons of, uh, fat was picked out for the month of December. Five hundred and forty three thousand, four hundred and forty pounds. Uh, also, you have the numbers there for the transfer station in the metal. We also rented, the city rented three forty yarder containers, one on Lozen Trail. And two on Goodwin. Customer did pay for a fee for this, uh, disposal and for rental of the forty yarder. Also, the older work roll off had a DOT inspection and it passed. That's my monthly, uh, report for December. On the second page, you'll see the two thousand and three annual report. City of Cthulhu did three hundred and forty two total trips. Three hundred and thirty two of them were to the city of Laredo. Eight were to the metal salvage in Perso and two were to the Melk, Wilkerson Meadow in Corizo Springs. We collected two hundred and thirty eight compactors for the amount of two thousand nine hundred and seventy five point forty two tons. Trash collected in two thousand twenty three for the city of Cthulhu was five million, nine hundred and fifty, eight hundred and forty pounds. Uh, collected eighty forty yarders from the transfer station for the total amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and eighty pounds. We have fourteen forty yarder containers for demolition houses, projects that the department did. Uh, one hundred and twenty one point forty one tons for the amount of two hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and forty pounds. Those are the, uh. The numbers for the demolition houses. And then we have ten metal to the, uh, containers for a total of forty six thousand, one hundred pounds. On my last report, it's the annual cleanup report. We initiated three cleanups for the year of two thousand twenty three. One in March, one in June, one in October. Out of those three cleanups, seventeen forty yarder containers. A hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and twenty pounds was collected from those three cleanups in two thousand twenty three. And twenty nine thousand, nine hundred pounds was collected for metal in those three cleanups. And approximately seven hundred tires were collected from the cleanups in two thousand twenty three.
Councilman, any questions for Mr. Martinez? Martinez, thank you very much for that report. Animal control, Gonzalez.
Mr. Wright, mayor. For the month of December, I had a total of two work orders. Um, no dogs were adopted. Um, three dogs rescued. Um, no owners came to, uh, to reclaim their dogs. Uh, a total of thirteen animals that were picked up that were dead. Um, four dogs that were euthanized and a total of eight were picked up. Um, nothing were caught in traps. The kennels are, are cleaned and sanitized daily and dogs and cats are fed daily. And the three dogs that were rescued were transported to Michigan American, Maryland. And that's all I have for it.
Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez, councilman? Thank you. Main street. No, there's not, no report right, right now. Accounting, Mr. Garcia.
First report up, going to the sales tax report, the month of January, and so we've collected one hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars. It looks like there's a slight decrease, but we've kind of narrowed it down to the construction going around thirty five. Um, on the next page is going to be the hotel motel tax collection. For the month of December, the collections were sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollars, ending the first quarter with one hundred and seventy seven thousand, nine hundred and forty eight dollars. On page six is going to be the general fund totals. Total revenue for the general fund was seven hundred and sixty four thousand, three hundred dollars. Total expenditures are six hundred and eighty six thousand, four hundred and eighty three dollars. Which is a net income of seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. On page nine is going to be the water and sewer total. The total revenue for the water and sewer fund is four hundred and twenty six thousand, one hundred and seventy four dollars. Total expenditures were three hundred and seventy seven thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollars, which is a net income of forty eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety four dollars. And next on page eleven is going to be the gas fund. Total revenue for the municipal gas fund was one hundred and fifty two thousand, nine hundred and twenty two dollars. Total expenditures fifty thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars. Which is a net income of one hundred and two thousand, five hundred and seventy eight dollars. And page thirteen is going to be the solid waste. Solid waste department total revenue was two hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Total expenditures were two hundred and thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and forty one dollars, which is a net loss of twenty nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty one dollars. So, um, the last report attached is going to be the check registry for the month of December. Are there any questions?
Are we doing okay on the hotel taxes?
I, I believe so. I think we had a, an ongoing audit going on. I'm not too sure the results on that. But I believe there's going to be some sort of results coming here soon, just to make sure that everybody's in compliance and all that. But, um. The numbers, I guess, I guess would look a little concerning, but again, I think that, that construction going along thirty five on the new road is just gonna take some getting used to. But I think it's gonna eventually even out and we'll give that to formal operation and kind of what we were predicting to come in.
What is the amount on the, on the collection that of the hotels?
Uh, I would have to get with Jen on that one to meet with Chi handle, the revenue that comes in for the hotel motel or the hotel and motel. Um, I would have to give a call on that one.
The last time I checked was, which was recent, is that almost every hotel was up to date. I believe there was two of them that were delayed.
Councilman, any other questions on accounting for Mr. Garcia? No, thank you very much for that report, Mr. Garcia. Moving on to item number six, approval of minutes, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty three. Instead of secretary, was there any change in the minutes? Councilman, did you have a chance to review the minutes? If you did, I, I, I seek the first motion to approve, uh, item number six. First motion by Mr. Setrute, I need a second. Second by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, discussion on possible action on the resolution of the city of Cattula, Texas calling for an election to be held on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for the purpose of electing the mayor of the city. One council member place one. Uh, council member place two. By the qualified voters of the city of Cattula establishing pay rates for election workers providing for early voting and for notice of the election. Provide other matters incidents to the election and setting an effective date.
Another question. Is this bill going to be controlled by the county uh, the election?
The election's being ran by the county yet.
And it's going to be uh, held here in the civic center or at the old city hall?
It would be at the old city hall.
Georgia would still be the running.
Correct. She is still involved. She's still making the packets and doing the, yeah, she's still involved.
Okay.
Any other questions on item number seven? Now I seek the first motion to approve item number seven. First motion by Mr. Lopez, second by Mr. Rodriguez, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, discussion on possible action on an ordinance of the city of Cattula, Texas rezoning lot eight, nine, ten, and eleven, block seventy-seven of the Ori land Ori land Orilander Heights subdivision from class A single-family residence to class G commercial business district as prescribed by code of municipal ordinances, city of Cattula, section fifty-eight dash five amendments, declared a public purpose incorporating recitals, providing for severability and setting an effective date. This is that, this is the reason why we had the hearing, so um, I seek the first motion to approve item number eight. First motion by Mr. Setutia, second. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, discussion on possible action on an ordinance of the city of Cattula, Texas rezoning lot ten, eleven, and twelve, block fifty-two of the of the Ori land Ori land, well, Ori land. Or- 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 or Leander. Or- or Leander Heights from class A single families residence to class G commercial business district as prescribed by code of municipal ordinances, city of Cattula, section fifty-eight dash five amend amendments, declared a public purpose incorporating recitals, providing for severability and setting an effective date. This is the other uh, property that we talked about in the hearing as well. I seek a first motion to approve item number nine. First motion by Mr. Setutia, second by Mr. Lopez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number ten, discussion on possible action on a request submitted by the Children's Alliance of South Texas, requesting for permission to use the Alexander Convention Center with fee waived on April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four to host their annual purse bingo.
I make a motion.
Yeah, we did this last year, so first motion is made by Mr. Ayala, second by Mr. Setutia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Council. Continued support of our event. Hope you had an opportunity to look over the letter that I I left explaining the services that have been offered to the children of the South County and it's very expensive to offer the services counseling to these children. And you guys helping us makes a big difference. And I want you to know, city of Cattula is at the top of the donor banner at our event.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item number eleven, discussion on possible action on a change order submitted by C E G O, a P M E adding an additional nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars to cover additional time in the field for socio-economic serving.
John, did you want to go ahead and give a presentation?
Yeah. You know how to set the setup.
Well, I can do it for you there.
I've also got a drive. It's easier.
How was the survey coming along?
I'm going to give an update on it. It's okay.
Thank you. Can't see it.
You want to move over here?
You can stand over there for a little bit. It's not going to last.
And I'll talk through most of this, so if you can't see, uh, hopefully.
Yeah, if we can get just that side turned off, it'd be good, sir.
So I was going to start with the quick background. You probably don't want to see the side anyways because there's a lot of writing on it. Um, but just uh, to remind y'all, uh, so the Texas Water Development Board provides funding for projects for drinking water and wastewater. Uh, to qualify for loans, loan subsidies and grants, a city area must have an annual median household income below seventy-five percent of the state median. Um, the Texas Water Development Board relies on information, often relies on information published by the U.S. Census Bureau. However, for the city of C- Cattula, the Census Bureau, the Census Bureau data was um, we felt like was missing and had some inadequate data. Um, now, the only way to uh, address that is to implement a socio-economic survey. And so that's what we have been working on. Um, real quick, I do, this is kind of a a change in 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 uh, in in what I'm going through, but uh, I just wanted to thank some folks because we've gotten a lot of help from folks at the city. And we're very thankful for a lot of the um, for for a lot of the help that we've gotten. So city of Cattula has been very helpful staff with the city. Uh, Cattula ISD has done a lot for us, Children's Alliance of South Texas, who I think is the person that just spoke. Uh, the Alexander Memorial Library, LaSalle County Courthouse, Fire Department Appraisal District, and I wanted to thank the folks on my team as well. Um, okay, so uh, now getting to the point of of what you had asked about. Okay, so where are we now? So we've sent text messages to approximately seven hundred and thirty-nine residents. We've done this twice. We've had um, five on-the-ground surveyors that have done, I think, twenty days now of door-to-door surveys. Uh, we've uh, visited all the government offices, churches, businesses. Um, I mentioned Cattula ISD. Um, and then city has has had uh, several efforts helping out as well. Uh, I believe flyers were given out with Thanksgiving hams. And uh, the city also reached out to all their employees to to fill out the survey. So results to date, okay, so number of responses collected, we are at three hundred and ninety responses out of four hundred and forty needed. So we need fifty more. Um, so that's about eighty-nine percent of the needed responses. So we're getting, I think that's pretty close. Um, so and and then in terms of the number, the AMHI, the average median uh, median household income level that the city needs to be at is fifty-five thousand. Uh, our current estimate is that 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 y'all are between thirty-six to forty thousand, so well on track. Um, the, just a little bit more information about the survey, Texas Water Development Board requires thirty percent response rate. So that's how all those numbers have been calculated. This is based on four hundred and eighty households, so four hundred and forty-four responses. Um, I already mentioned the AMHI. Survey deadline is February ninth, so we're getting pretty close to the deadline. I think we're ramping up here a bit. I was even out in the field today before this, trying to collect responses. Um, and this is a graph that shows the survey progress and where that number has been. So you can see, um, it's probably a little bit hard to see this. I'm going to, can I walk over here?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. Um, so we started and it is kind of all over the place, but as we've gone further, it's kind of uh, uh, gotten to gotten less fair, variable. Um, so we are, as I was saying, we're about between thirty-six thousand and forty thou- forty thousand. I think right now we're at about forty uh, thirty-six thousand. And we are roughly almost ninety percent. So that is the, that's basically the status. Does that answer your question? Do you have, do y'all have any other questions?
No, not me.
And uh, just in terms of the change order, so it's taken us a little bit longer than we had expected. Um, we've uh, visited, uh, we've had a few more trips. We were also, um, we also had a few complications early on getting started and um, and um, getting things going. And we are now trying to ramp up and get uh, get everything going pretty fast so that we can meet the deadline. Uh, but I think we're, I think we're well on our way with only fifty more responses needed.
So, so did you have a question for me?
Yes, sir, I did. This survey that he's doing, is there a reason for this?
Yes, it's a very, very critical reason that our city needs.
Because people that here may not understand.
So, so when when the census, when the census came through, if it was in twenty twenty-one, um, when they knocked door-to-door, which when they came to my house, they never asked me. Um, they verified income of people that live at, lived at the properties here in Cattula. Um, from from what we can see, there was large blocks in the census where they didn't grab any data at all, the Cattula city limits. Um, generally, what what has happened is they they've placed us uh, household incomes for Cattula over fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, Mr. Dovellina at that time, because this was initiated when he was here, thought that that was, that was very high and thought that it wasn't at that amount. Um, being over that threshold, uh, entities like Texas Water Development Board in particular, um, it takes us out of the eligibility for grants and low-interest loans and pretty much everything they offer. Um, so at that point, uh, we we contacted C E G O, came through council, approved C E G O through council to do this survey. Texas Water Development Board, being that they know that the census ain't perfect, is allowing this to happen. They give us a strict deadline of when we have to complete. If if John is not completed within that deadline, the survey means nothing to them and we stay where we're at. Um, improvement in our city, opportunity in our city, this is what we have to do to make that happen. And that's what John's been working every day. He updates me weekly on what's going on. We, he probably calls me three times a week, call staff, you know, we're trying to get it done. A lot of, a lot of the issue, though, is that um, we haven't had the best response in the beginning. So his, his allotted time of contract, as far as dollars and hours on the ground, is already, it's exhausted. And that's why he's here asking for a, for a change order on the project.
And and this is only a little bit under ten thousand, you know, um, uh, when you do, when you get a bond through the Water Development Board, it comes with a big forgiveness grant. You know, and so that, this is hardly nothing compared to what our city is going to benefit of, you know.
Right, right now, from the last loans that the city got Texas Water Development Board, which was about nineteen million dollars, I think we got one point one million dollar loan forgiveness, which was a grant. Um, the city still has that and it's offers to use. Um, we are talking, we are actually working on the radio read meter system to use that money, a portion of it. Um, there's a possibility, you know, like the mayor was saying, is that, that I strongly feel that we need to look into another water well. Um, we do have two brand-new wells and they're excellent, but they still break down. And we don't, I really feel we don't have redundancy in our system like we should, especially as the city's growing. Three water wells, GPM, thirteen years ago, our city was in a totally different situation, but we have the same amount of wells with the same GPM and we have more demand. So, so I really feel something needs to happen, and this is, this is how we make it happen.
Yeah, this is the way, this is the way for our city to make the best of it of of the funds that are going to be available for our city.
I thank you very much for answering that, especially for the public that would like to know.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to approve.
Any other questions for John, is it?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, uh, city council? John, thank you very much for that report, um, for your PowerPoint presentation. Um, first motion to approve item number eleven has been made by Mr. Setutia, second by Mr. Ayala. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. John, good luck and thank you for being here tonight.
Can I make one additional request?
Sure.
If there's anybody here anywhere um, that hasn't filled out the survey, I would love to collect the survey information from you.
There's three questions, my brother.
Three questions, yes.
I did.
Just twenty seconds or so, so please come see me and I'd be happy to fill that out. I get very confused. Thank you. We just need fifty more.
Thank you, John. Moving on to item number twelve, discussion on possible action to accept a donation from Four L, uh, Oil Field Services LLC to the Cattula Main Street Program in the amount of two thousand dollars.
So, so this check, this check came in through the mail to the city of Cattula for the Cattula Main Street Program. Um, every dollar that we have a donation for whatever department or entity we have, I ask that it comes to council and council accepts it. Just so everyone knows that this money came in, uh, this check here, if council accepts it, there is a five, there's a five oh one C three account that the city holds. This money would go into that account.
Yes.
In what category would it fall in? Is the main street or would it be used?
Well, this is specifically for the main street program, so it would have to be in the main street program. Yes, sir. Was it, was there a letter associated or was it just the check? Okay, so he didn't allocate what he wanted to accept for the main street program.
I'll be okay with it.
A motion has been made on item number twelve. First motion was made by Mr. Rodriguez. I need to seek a second. Second by Mr. Lopez. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion on possible action to ratify an energy expense paid to peerless equipment in the amount of forty thousand fifty-one dollars for well number eight. Be well number nine. Well, Jimmy had already put that on his report, so um, is there any questions on?
No question.
No, there's no further questions. First approval was, um, first motion was made by Mr. Setutia, second by Mr. Ayala. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
We're going to need to come back and fix that, get the wrong well number.
It'll have to be corrected.
Okay.
But.
You want to table it?
Well, you already took a vote, but we didn't have an expense on well number eight.
Well, yeah, but um, because he covered it on his report, so and it was said well number nine still. Okay, so we'll come back and.
Do you need a motion to suspend the motion?
I mean, we just approved an expense that doesn't exist, so.
Doesn't mean it, okay.
Yeah, I guess. I I mean, it it's already been paid, which is perfectly fine. We just need to get it.
Correct the well number, yeah. Absolutely right.
Because it's a well number nine instead of eight.
Instead of eight, yes.
Well, uh, meeting February eighth, we'll put it on that agenda.
We'll ask for it. We'll ask for correction on that. Item number fourteen, discussion on possible action to allow LaSalle County to plan and host the Fourth of July celebration for two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, county judge approached me and the mayor uh, last year, I believe in October, it was in October.
Yeah.
And he asked if there was a possibility that the county could host the Fourth of July festivities this year. Um, he also talked about maybe to the point to where the county can do it one year, the city can do it the next, and we can alternate it. Um, I think it's been at least, at least five or six years the city has hosted it. Prior to that, it was a separate event. County had their event, city had their event and the the, my opinion, the funds were separated and they, they, you know, you couldn't get what we could if we put everything together. Um, in in the city budget, we have a fifty thousand dollar allocation for Fourth of July. Um, county has the same historically, the county would mail, send us the check and we would facilitate the Fourth of July. Um, they're asking if they can do it this year.
Yeah, and I, and you know, I entertain the the idea to go ahead and do this because uh, there are some commissioners that or or people on their staff that they want to see other music. And then we choose some music, so they, they felt that they were being left out because they contribute to to this festival. to, to this festival as well. So this will facilitate things and hopefully eliminate confrontation between anybody, you know, because they'll do it one year, they'll control the music and then we do it the following year and we, we control, even though we're all in a local agreement and we, we just get it done together.
With the, with the city.
That's always going to be one year and one year, right?
Well, for, for today, we're only approving for them to do it this year.
Okay.
With the city being involved, also on helping put barricades on the, on those streets or not?
Yeah, well, yes, to the, to their necessity, we would definitely help. So just the same as any other year, I mean, we would definitely help.
Does it require that the city have an itemized list of what is spent on the event on behalf of the city itself?
From the county?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, like, we don't. They don't. But that's, you all, you all could say that, but they've never asked us that. They've given us the check and we've pretty much spent, no.
The amount they contribute?
They contribute fifty thousand and the city contributes fifty thousand.
Fifty and fifty.
Would it be in the best interest of item number?
You, you can definitely ask for that.
That would be.
So, so when it comes, yeah, well, so when it comes to hot tax, it's the same principle. And the money does come out of the hot tax, so we would have to get a itemization. That's correct.
There's no further discussion on item number fourteen. I seek a first motion to approve item number fourteen. First one is made by Mr. Rodriguez. I seek a second. Second by Mr. Ayala. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number fifteen, closed session. It is now eight oh three. Letter A, Texas Government Code and Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney. B, Texas Government Code and Section five five one, decimal zero seven four, personal matters.
Alright everybody welcome back. Item number sixteen is open session. Open session, the city council will reconvene into an open meetings session to discuss what was taken action on closed session on item fifteen A and B. I want to say that nothing, no action was taken. It was just information for us, that's all it was. And no action was taken. It is now nine twenty-three and this meeting is adjourned.